Good evening. My name is Kim Beaman and I would like to welcome you all tonight to the third and final Laramie County School District Number One Board of Trustees Candidate Forum hosted by the Cheyenne Teachers Education Association. I'm a third grade teacher at Pioneer Park and I'm also a CTA member and our building representative for our school and I also proudly serve as the State Vice President for Wyoming Education Association. I would first like to thank Mason Magania for organizing all of the candidate forums. He is a Spanish teacher and has been a Spanish teacher in our district for eight years. He was elected to serve in the role of Member at Large on the CTA Executive Board and he volunteered to organize all of these forums by himself. He's currently traveling to do some training with some other educators tomorrow, so we ask if I can help for him. If you don't know who we are, the Cheyenne Teachers Education Association is a professional organization that strives to improve public education in the lives of Laramie County students. Our members are teachers, counselors, librarians, coaches, nurses, and other certified staff. We are dedicated employees who work to deliver services to students throughout their school day and advocate for positive public education policies. We also try to bridge the gap between educators, policymakers, and members of the community. Building this bridge is the purpose of this forum and why we are here tonight. Now for the thank yous. First, thank you to our candidates for your interest in serving our community, running for the school board, and for taking time to join us this evening. Next, thank you to the dedicated staff of the Wyoming Education Association, especially WEA's Communications Director Amanda Turner for her hard work and time to make these forums successful. I would also like to thank LCSD One for their continual support of our association and for allowing us the space to put these forums, including the building principal and staff who helped prepare the space for us. A huge thank you to the student moderators of this event who put out their huge pile of homework for the two hours to be here and run this show. And finally, to all the members of the community who showed up here to be involved in our community's success, thank you. Here's some general information about this year's election. Four of the seven seats on Laramie County School District Number One Board are for election this November. Candidates have filed in different area races based on where they live, and residents of Laramie County get to vote for one area candidate, which is based on where they live, and one at-large candidate who represents all triads. The forums tonight host Area Three and At-Large candidates. We hosted Area One's forum on Monday at South High School. Area Two's forum was last night at East High School, and at-large candidates have been present at all three forums. Finally, let's talk about tonight's events. Like I said, this forum will feature candidates running for two different races, Area Three and At-Large. We invited every candidate who filed for the Area Three and the At-Large races to participate in this event. We asked candidates to complete and submit a written questionnaire for our candidate biography sheet. We have QR codes posted at the entrance of the auditorium that contain the information the candidates submitted. We generated the questions for tonight's forum by sharing a survey with students, teachers, staff, and parents with instructions to spread it further. This survey was administered during the past few weeks and generated over eighty responses. We put these questions into unique clusters based on which triad they came from, and we attempted to address as many of the community's concerns as we could by refining the eighty-plus questions into eight per triad. Those are the questions you'll hear tonight. We are asking that the audience hold their applause for all candidates until the end of the forum. It's now my pleasure to introduce some moderators of this forum. Please give a round of applause for our Central High Student Council and Speech and Debate students. That's not very sexy. I'm going to step aside now and allow the students to take over. Moderators, please introduce yourselves, state the rules of this forum, and begin with your questions. Thank you, everyone.
My name is Anne Christopherson and I am a student senate sponsor for McCormick Junior High and I've been teaching for twenty-three years.
My name is Silas DeCory and I'm a student at McCormick Junior High, I'm in eighth grade. I participate in wrestling and Student Senate.
My name is Clay DeFoder and I'm a student at McCormick Junior High and I'm in eighth grade and I participate in orchestra, band, sports, Student Senate, and several other clubs.
My name is Andrew Wire and I'm a student at McCormick Junior High School. I'm in eighth grade and I've participated in Cheyenne Youth and the McCormick Student Senate, math counts, and I'm a former chess club, a lot of others.
Hi, my name is Aiden and I'm a student at McCormick Junior High. I'm in the eighth grade and I participate in Student Senate, basketball, track, and volleyball. Does that sound good to you?
It is.
It is.
My name is Jane Nocheski. I'm a student at McCormick Junior High. I'm in eighth grade and I participate in Student Senate, National Juniors Honor Society, and FFA.
We have following rules for procedures and etiquette requirements. Candidates will begin with a ninety-second introduction of why they're running for school board. Candidates will have up to ninety seconds to answer each question. Time limits will be strictly adhered to. The moderator will call time at the end of ninety seconds and candidates are asked to stop their comment immediately. If you find that you've run out of time or are cut off before you finish a point, jot it down because the last question of the night will give you a final sixty seconds to give any last words or finish making a point from earlier in the forum. Questions will be posted to all candidates beginning with Area Three and then At-Large in alphabetical order, and then rotates so each candidate who responds first will be given a different question. Since this is a forum and a debate, please avoid any personal attacks on the other candidates. Question one. Please introduce yourself and explain why you're running for this board.
Good evening. My name is Chrissy Boston. I'm an incumbent running for reelection. I have a familiar area of the district because of that. I've served for forty years and I understand the challenges that we're facing as well as our strengths. I also am a parent of three in our school district and got involved initially because I was substitute teaching as a part-time job and I kept meeting students that who couldn't read. And I also witnessed how our teachers were spread up in and there was a lot of them late and I felt like with the policy background that I have from working in Washington DC for fifteen years, I thought I could use my skills to make improvements to our district. So I ran initially and I feel like there's still lots to do. I think it's important to be a parent, I'm sorry, a voice for parents, which I've tried to do the last forty years. I think it's critically important that we work on student outcomes and improving those from grades K through twelve, and we've definitely started that work. There's a long way to go on that. I think it's important to manage our resources well and to continue the work that we started in securing our belongings and making sure we have safe and secure, well, we have safe and secure belongings, but we also, sorry, have emotional security and safety for our students. Thank you.
That's a very small timer. My name is Dr. Todd Donalds. I'm running for Central City, Laramie County School Board. I'm running because I grew up here in this district and the education I got here enabled me to land what I think is my dream job. I love what I do right now because of the foundation of education I got in this district. Actually, on this stage, I was a student, a central graduate. But fourth just after me, I'm running in my area of expertise too. I want to serve this district because I know education. I'm in my twenty-fifth year of teaching. In that time, I taught high school English, I taught fifth grade, I was a home literacy coach, and now clearly teaching future English teachers and getting younger English teachers in the area. So education is what I live, is what I love. On the way, I also have to get my own education. I have an EDS, educational leadership, a PhD in understudiation. So when they talk about leadership and literacy, I have advanced degrees in both of those areas. On top of that, I'm an educational researcher. I have articles published in the Harvard Educational Review, the Journal of Advanced Literacy, the Study of Education and More, represented nationally and internationally on literacy. This is what I love, this is what I do, my passion is education. So I want to give back to the community, give back to this district in my area of expertise, which is why I'm running today. Thank you.
My name is Melissa Terrio. I am also running in the Central Triad. I'm an attorney. I'm a case manager for people with developmental disabilities. I'm a Wyoming native. I am a mother of four and an Iraqi war vet's wife. My son graduated from Central in 2021 and has gone on to the US Air Force Station in Canada, Mexico. My oldest daughter will be graduating this year. By the time my youngest daughter graduates from Central, I have been a parent with children in Laramie County School District Number One for twenty-eight years. So with that, I come with an extensive amount of knowledge and background as a parent and as an advocate for people in our community. And I also have invested interest, so I have fourteen years left here. And I've seen some good things. I've seen some things in our community that I'm very proud of, but I've seen some things that are concerning me, and that's why I'm running. We used to be in a situation where our community worked together with our teachers and our board and our parents, and I need to get back to that. We need to get back to that. Where we're at now is what we're seeing is the politics have come into our board. We've gotten to a place where instead of focusing on the fact that our students are in the bottom fifty percentile in test scores and the fact that Wyoming has one of the highest rates of juvenile detention, we're focusing on politics brought to our door by parties and special interests.
Thank you for inviting us again to this forum and thank you, students, for helping us this evening for your questions. My name is Amy Bailey. I'm running for the At-Large seat in Laramie County School District Number One. I served ten years on the board in years past. I left the board in 2014 and was chairman of the board at the time. My wife's saying I have had seven children educated in this district. She and I both graduated from Cheyenne East High School. We have had fourteen grandchildren either graduated from this district or currently attending in this district. I'm a practicing attorney and have practiced all this community for forty-four years. I have coached youth sports in this community, girls and boys, something over twenty years of basketball, soccer, baseball. I love young people and I think I have something to offer because of the experience I've had in school administration, particularly on the school board. When I left the school board in 2014, our teacher pay was among the highest in the region, if not the country. I've seen that change. I'm running principally to make sure that what takes place in the classroom is education and indoctrination, that resources get to the classroom for education in place, that parents' rights and role in the education of their children are respected, and that we have a school environment that allows students to flourish.
All right, thank you. My name is Renee Hinkle and I'm running for the At-Large position for Laramie County School Board. I'm an OB-GYN physician in town. I served eleven years in the US Navy. I've lived and worked in Cheyenne for twenty-four years and have delivered thousands of babies in this community. I've raised two daughters who are educated in our Cheyenne Public Schools. I am passionate about high-quality public education. Our strong public schools was one of the reasons that we moved to this community when we started having family. Without high-quality public education, a community cannot thrive. I have served on many boards in Cheyenne over the past twenty-four years and bring experience of board governance to this position. I'm running for school board because over the past two years, I have seen the focus of the board distracted from, distracted by national political issues that do not contribute to student education. I want to focus the board back on its primary goal of high-quality public education for all students in our district. I want to get politics out of the boardroom and out of the classroom. I believe all students deserve high-quality education, a safe place to go to school both physically and emotionally, and I believe all students should be treated with respect and dignity.
Thank you for inviting me tonight. It's real nice to be here. My name is Meg Farhman. I'm running for the At-Large seat for Laramie County School District Number One. I'm a parent with two kids that currently are in Central but have attended the schools in Cheyenne. When we moved here, we came from Las Vegas and it was really obvious that the schools were better here than they were in Las Vegas. I know it seems like a strange thing, but it's really true. This community really cares about education and I am included in that. My reasons for running were I am passionate about education, I'm passionate about quality education for everyone. I am passionate about accessibility. That means it's not our job on the school board to restrict what things you can get ahold of, it's our job to provide accessibility to it for students, for parents, for anyone. And I believe equality, we are in the equality state, therefore everyone deserves quality education no matter where you're from, your race, your sexual orientation, your disabilities, or your socioeconomic status. You deserve quality education and that's my job to ensure that happens. So please vote for Meg Farhman for school.
Question two. What is the role of the school board and school board members? What will you need to improve schools in the Central Triad?
All right, thank you for your question. I'm Gacy Cebec, by the way, I'm not sure why. Sorry. So the role of the school board, it's actually spelled out on the state statute, it's spelled out on the board policies, but one of the things that the school board should be doing, another thing the school board should be doing, is focus on the larger picture, the big policies and the big structures that are in place within the course of the district. We have officially one employee as the superintendent. Everything else goes underneath that, run by the administration. So one of the things the board needs to do is make sure that it focuses on the work of the board, which is those larger policies and those larger procedures, and not micromanaging teachers, not micromanaging librarians, not micromanaging the day-to-day operations. As far as what I do to improve the school board, partly is that getting back to working the board, making sure the board is focused on what the board is supposed to be focused on, so that we have those larger structures in place, so that our great administrators and teachers can go about doing the work that they do with the students on a day-to-day basis. But our job is up here at policy, their job is for the students on the ground. We need to make sure that we're staying on the policy level, keeping those structures in place, restlessness.
Parents parent, teachers teach, and the school board is here to make sure that we're creating an environment where that can happen. We need a safe and productive environment where children are free to learn, teachers are free to teach, librarians are free to stock their books, and parents get to parent their own child. Currently, our school board is failing us on that. They're wasting their time trying to do my job as a parent instead of focusing on the fact that our test scores are in the bottom fifty percent, that our juvenile detention rate is high, that our schools need addressed as far as the safety and the facilities go. And so that's what the school board is here to do and that is what I will do if you vote for me to be on the school board. I will ensure that the school board focuses on its tasks. Let's the parents parent their own kids, let's teachers teach, and the school board does their job.
The principal role of the school board, as Ben mentioned, is to set the policy. We were building a building, the school board might be like the architect, figure out the plans, and the superintendent and other administrators would be the builders who'd build the building in accordance with those plans. Probably the most important function of the school board is hiring the superintendent and other administrators and making sure those people run the district on a day-to-day basis in accordance with the policy and the vision that the board has set. What would I do to improve the schools in the Central Triad? Frankly, I think the schools in the Central Triad are pretty darn good, but they need improvement just like we all do. And one of the things I hope I can help accomplish if I'm elected is to make sure what takes place in the classroom is education and not indoctrination, that we teach math, science, history, English, the fine arts, computers, and leave all of the other cultural and political things entirely out of the classroom. I think that's the best thing that we can do for students.
I think, again, the role of the board has already been defined quite a bit, but governance is really its main purpose. So the main purpose of the board is to set the policies and to ensure that the district is following the policies through the superintendent and his or her office. And so learning how to set policy and how to review policy is one of the main goals for the board, and so I think that my long history of being active in boards in this community will help with that. Having said that, I think the most important, our most important job, once the policies are set, is to make sure that the superintendent is following those policies, that she is ensuring that all the schools in the district are also following those policies. And our main goal should be to work together to, for student education, I mean, every decision we make, every policy we make should be made with the one goal of improving student education, improving student test scores, improving student outcomes, improving graduation rates. Every decision we make should be based on that and not politics.
Well, the role of the school board is to be a leader, so we, but we are a leader comprised of our community. That means we listen to the stakeholders as well as the, we have to listen to the students, we have to listen to the parents, and we have to listen to the teachers, because without this partnership, nothing worse. One of the things I think is really important, and I haven't seen it in the past, is that the school board needs to work specifically with teachers. Teachers are the most important stakeholder, and I say this because they're the boots on the ground. They're the ones that have to teach the students to improve those test scores and those reading scores and improve education. And so I think it's really important that the board interacts with teachers specifically when they make new policies, because we have to get their input to find out if they're actually going to work, if they're going to be useful, if they're going to help the students, and that's something really important that the board has to do. The other thing is to set access to education. It is our job to provide a quality education, to make sure that those policies are being followed and are actually improving, and when they don't, to review them, start over again, and make them better. That's our job. We are meant to work with everyone so that the improvements work for everyone.
The role of the school board is to set policy, to hire the superintendent, to ensure that she's following the policy that the school board sets, to approve the budget, which we have over two, a $250 million budget that we're providing annually, and to approve contracts, and the list goes on and on. But we don't have the role of getting involved at the teacher level or at any building level. That's the superintendent's job and she has a professional staff that does that. Having said that, we're elected leaders, and the whole purpose of having a school board, in my opinion, is that we represent our community and that includes all of our stakeholders. Those stakeholders include our teachers, our parents, our support staff, our principals, and just general people in the community. And I know I probably left a few stakeholders out, but my point is that we're elected to be the voices in the district for our community.
How important, how important is planning time for teachers to improve their student learning? Do you think teachers in our district have enough, too little or too much planning time for the elementary, junior high, and high school levels?
I believe we have an obligation to make sure our students have a healthy and safe environment to learn. I believe we have an obligation to make sure our teachers have everything they need in order to teach. That's what I do as a case manager, and make sure that people are able to receive the services they need within the guidelines set by the state and the funding set by the state. If you elect me to be on the board, what I'll do is a top-to-bottom audit of how we're spending our money and how we're allocating our teachers' time, to ensure that their time is best spent focusing on the needs of our students, not on our political rhetoric or not on our micromanaging of them, but how they can serve our children, because every child in this district is entitled to the same world-class quality education guaranteed by our constitution.
The answer to the first question is, it's critical. Planning time for teachers is critical. And I think right now in the school system the way we have it, we have a lot of teachers that are thinking about getting out of teaching for various reasons, but one of the reasons is all the stuff that keeps spinning, getting placed on the platters, things that they have to do, bureaucratic activities that perhaps don't translate well into education in the classroom. I have four teachers in my family, three of my children teach in this district, my granddaughter teaches in another district. My wife is a school teacher, although she's never taught outside at home, but she is definitely a school teacher. And I can tell you that they plan all the time, not just during the school year, but in the summer. There's a great misconception in society that teachers work nine months out of the year and then they get a three-month vacation. The teachers I know and the teachers that are in my family work year-round on their craft and they take it very seriously because they love what they do. The answer to the second question, I don't know. I don't know if there's too little or not enough. I would want teachers to tell me. I would listen to teachers and have them tell me what they think needs to be done. But I'm glad some of them will say, we have a lot of other stuff we have to do that doesn't really translate well in the classroom.
Thank you. Yes, I do think that planning time is very important for teachers, and all the teachers that I know do much of their planning at home, so it's pretty obvious that currently teachers don't have enough. Will there ever be enough? I don't know. As Mr. Bailey was saying, teachers are planning all the time. And so luckily, we have fabulous teachers in our district and these teachers care about our students, and so they are spending large amounts of time planning and trying to make school more fun and interesting and to help students learn to think so that they're ready when they graduate from high school. So I don't think there's going to ever be enough time, but I think planning time is super important. I think one of the main problems also is that there are a lot of administrative duties now put on teachers. There are multiple, multiple assessments that are done, and one of the things that we need to look at is are all these assessments absolutely critical and can some of them be combined, can they be streamlined? So that will be an important thing to look at, that will be something that as a board I think we should ask our superintendent to look at and try and limit as much as possible those extra things that are put onto our teachers.
My answer's not going to be very different. I agree it's absolutely critical. It's important for teachers to have that planning time because it helps with their creative, re-creativity, conducting the crit, the, losing my words here, conducting the classroom assessments but also the classroom teaching. If they don't have the time to plan, they can't come up with creative ways to teach your kids and they can't reach the larger number of kids that need to be reached. Do, is there enough time? I agree with my other fellow candidates that I'm not sure there's enough time. I'm not sure I can answer that. I myself am not a teacher, but I do know from the friends and family that have been teaching that it takes a lot of time so they can. that it takes a lot of time so they can reach as many kids and as many students as possible. I think it's something that we should definitely consider as a board, as a group, to understand why we need to do all these other things. And I think the teachers have been given too many things additionally to the teaching they need to do. And I think we should definitely look into that and if it's absolutely necessary. Again, my answer's not too different from anyone else.
I agree with the word "critical." I think teachers have this importance and it's critical to their work ethic overall. I also think that professional development is important for teachers. And I think major issues in the class, addressing those, and that we can do through policy, I'd like to see us do more of that so that our teachers aren't spending so much of their time trying to address a few students in the classroom. And that takes away from their lesson plans and time and the other students in the class. I also think our teachers need to be appropriately compensated. And they are stretched too thin, in my opinion. And so I think that's a worthwhile cause to look into. How can we work with our teacher groups to try to find solutions to making a work environment that...
There is never enough planning time. It's just that simple. I teach my students right now how to plan and create their lesson plans. We're putting together a unit, a design, a plan tomorrow, actually. And there's just, there's not enough time. But there are two kinds of planning, right? There's the planning that's on video, and then there's the planning that's in reality. On paper, we could look at a visual picture with perhaps two pre-crews and have those two pre-crews off. But in reality, that teacher has to actually get to the restroom at that time, maybe get some food at that time, maybe get down to make some copies, maybe talk to somebody other than just a student for just a second. Possibly have meetings, have KLCs, all sorts of those things. On paper, they have this planning time. But in reality, that planning time is just about five or 10 minutes. So what we need to do is we negotiate agreements with the given, we need to make sure we protect that time as much as possible. The director from the board needs to be the principal that they need to protect that time. Need to make sure that all those other activities that are mandated can happen in other ways so that we can protect, protect that. As an elementary teacher, there were days when I would have bus duty in the morning. I would have a meeting here in my one private day. I would have a quiz activity at lunch, and I'd have bus duty after school. I actually went through an entire week without a single minute of planning time, begging my teachers to stop me at the restrooms so I could, so I could watch my class. So there's never enough time to be in the classroom.
Yeah, my answer's this time.
Yes. Question four. The BIPOC and LGBTQ+ populations are historically underrepresented in China. Racism and homophobia are clear and present dangers to these kids every single day. What specific things would you do as a trustee to protect the well-being of these students and ensure that they feel like they are valued by their schools and divisions?
Thank you. There's one question here, there's two statements. So I'm going to begin with the statements. The first statement, I don't have any idea about. I just, I don't know that, that these groups are underrepresented. I would want to listen to those groups. I would want to listen to parents, community members, so I could come to an understanding about the underrepresentation. Personally, I am a very dear friend in this community of every color and stripe that you can imagine, and every political persuasion. And so, but I just don't know about this. You all wouldn't know more about this than I do. So I would want to listen to that. Racism and homophobia are clear and present dangers. Racist behaviors, homophobic behaviors, conduct that's harmful to others is a clear and present danger, no matter where it exists, in the school or outside of school. I had a career in my leading profession of protecting people's rights and litigating people's rights. So I understand that. What specific things would I do to protect the well-being of students? I would do everything I can to make sure every student feels valued, feels respected. And I want to make sure that we eliminate from the classroom politics and cultural issues so that the focus in the classroom are the subject matters that help students thrive when they get out of this school district.
Thanks. This is obviously a very important issue. I think every interview, at least all of these things we've done, every candidate forum, every interview that we've done has tried to address discrimination in our schools. And it is obviously an issue. When I was a parent, when my kids were here, I didn't realize it was going on. So I think part of it is making sure that everyone in the community is aware of the amount of racism that is happening in our schools. And so, public awareness, communication, education are all things that we're gonna need to do. We do have a strategic plan. Part of that strategic plan and part of the policies of the district do talk about discrimination. And it is very important to the board. And we need to make sure that those policies are being followed, that the superintendent knows that this is a very high priority for us, that we need to get discrimination under control. We need to make sure that every single employee knows this. We need to make sure that every student knows this. We need to not tolerate the behavior. So when it's reported, we need to have some kind of system, maybe some kind of mandatory feedback system. And anytime it's reported, there's a mandatory feedback to the person that did the reporting on what was done, who was spoken to, things like that. So we need to come up with some sort of system so that everyone knows they will be heard, they will listen to, and we're not ignoring them.
I know that these groups are historically underrepresented. I've seen it. I've experienced it. My kids are on the spectrum. Racism and homophobia was very clear in McCormick back in 2019. My kids were there at the time, and they experienced it and saw the fallout from it. So I'm very aware of that things need to be addressed. As I understand, there is a strategic plan. But what we really need is to set a policy that protects these kids and understands that they need to be enforced. Because we can't sweep it under the rug. It's not gonna go away with us saying, "Oh, it's fine. We'll take care of it." It needs to be done. It needs to be enforced. And I know that seems like a harsh perspective, but no one's going to trust us to be leaders if we don't do something about it. Also, one of the things that recently came up on June 16th, 2021, the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights State issued a notice of interpretation and said, explaining that to enforce by the lines of provision of discrimination on the basis that includes discrimination based on sexual orientation and discrimination based on gender identity. So we need to stand up for those as well. It's in our Title IX educational amendments. So I think it's important that we have a policy to protect them, and we stand behind them, and we do something about it.
No one should feel unsafe or unrelentant at school, period. We do have, in our district, the strategic plan. As stated before, we have a no-tolerance policy for bullying or discrimination against any of our students. Doesn't mean it doesn't happen. It happens. With fidelity, we need to be implementing our policies and making sure that there's disciplinary actions taken and to live in the... We have also a initiative called "Sources of Strength" that we're implementing on different schools to build relationships between different students and teachers, and relationships between teachers and students, and embracing our differences and teaching our students and our staff that everyone is welcome, everyone should feel safe. We've also, at the board level, passed a resolution in response to our face requesting help because they have some families that moved to town and their children have experienced different incidents, racism, mostly, I think. And so we took it very seriously. We got the resolution saying that we will not tolerate that kind of behavior in our schools. The one that's under control there.
So as I was growing up, there was an aunt that grew up with a kid, and said, "How do you get these drugs? Where do you get these from? How do you do this?" The kid looked up at Dad and said, "You, Dad." And I'm like, "I'm watching you." Imagine being the parent of one of the kids who's been targeted by these racial regimes in this sound right now, in their souls. They're learning this behavior. "I hate to call the community, I hate to call leadership for their behavior." They look at our board meetings and hear the hatred regarding the board meetings, and say, "We are brothers together." They see the hatred there. They hear it on social media, they hear it from news, they hear it from politicians. They hear hatred over and over and over again coming from adults who normalize hatred to the point where we're trying to ban LGBTQ+ books. We're trying to attack books about characters of color. We're trying to... Sorry. I learned a lot of information yesterday about a third of mine. And this figure issue is just making me angry because our kids are watching us. And it's time for us, as adults, to be changed. We need to stop the hate. We are the ones who need to stop the boardroom. We need to stop attacking the books. We need to stop attacking the kids. We need to stop attacking the curriculum. It's not indoctrination to say that, for example, there are other cultures than the white culture. There are other cultures than the straight culture. That's not indoctrination. That's fact. We need to teach them that we, as adults, even people who wants to do it, we have to follow this behavior. We cannot continue to punish kids for doing what we've taught them to do. We also need to change without stop, pressure.
Freedom of speech is one of the most fundamental, precious freedoms that we have. But you know what? We can't yell "fire" in a crowded theater, just like kids can go running around saying, "Dan, we're down the hallway." We know that. We all know that. And as a board, we need to set a precedent that we do not support hate speech. If we're saying that we can never say that there's hate speech, which this board has done in the fact that this board refused to include hate speech as a matrix in the discipline, or maybe it was removed, I'm not sure. I know the incumbent is very proud of keeping hate speech out of the discipline. What we are saying to our students is that we are not standing up to racism. We are not standing up to hate speech. We are not creating a safe environment. I'm an attorney. I live and die by what I speak. Freedom of speech is everything. But we know that there is, you cannot say certain things. And we know that we have to stand up to people who would say otherwise. We know we have to teach our children. And as a board, we need to take a strong stance because of course, children don't feel safe. If we're not there to say, "You cannot say certain things," and we will not tolerate it. What are your thoughts on banning or limiting students' access to books? Do you believe that librarians should be allowed to select reading materials for their students?
Thank you. I do not support banning books. I do not support limiting books in our libraries. We have fabulous teachers. We have fabulous librarians. And they do a wonderful job of selecting appropriate books for our children. They, the book staff have been in the news lately, are not in our elementary and junior high schools. They're in high schools. And so they're age-appropriate. Our librarian is making sure of this. They have a policy that they follow in how to select these books and what age-appropriate books they are. So, and the board actually did review that and feel that it was appropriate. So we have a very good policy for selecting books. We do not have pornography in our schools. And having books that relate to every subject is important. It is just in the last question. It's important that people who are marginalized have books that they can see themselves in. They have books where they can understand their role. They can have books where they can learn about their feelings being normal so they can not feel like they're, they need to be ostracized. They can love themselves no matter what they are like. So they need to be able to see themselves in these books. And the majority of books that have one, that people want to ban don't have white characters. They have characters of color and the LGBTQ society.
I'm all about books. I'm all about education. I had an advisor in graduate school that said, "Read everything?" No. Do I, I do not support banning books. I do not support limiting students' access to books. I think they need to learn and to read everything and know everything because you learn things you don't know because you don't know what you don't know. And books provide that opportunity. They also provide a way to see cultures that are not wrong. That's what education is. Exposure to ideas that are different. Exposure to ideas you've never seen or never heard of. You can't learn new things without learning new things. Do I believe librarians should be allowed to select reading materials for their students? Absolutely. They're professionals. They know the books. They see, they see new books coming out. They see how they'd be great for students, great for people everywhere. And the marginalized people of our country need to know that they are represented. Representation matters. They need to know that there are books out there of how they feel, how they look, how they interact, and that they can find all the characteristics that we see in regular books that have white folk in them. Everyone deserves to read. Reading is really important, and I'm all for encouraging reading.
This is not adopting any books that are about marginalized groups at all. It's been my access to this, to be informed. I'm on the board, so please trust me. Please go back and look at our meetings. What the issue was is that there are about 50 of our 350,000 books in our secondary libraries that have graphic and explicit details of sex acts. People get in on all kinds of people. And they know this. And it's so heterosexual, it's homosexual, some of it is sibling, I mean, it goes on. This is a dual content in the minds of most people. And I think that we, as a board, should take it up as a policy matter and address it through our policy that we restrict access unless we ask the parent first if they want their child reading that level of a dual content. We are a K-12 system. We have minors. We have policies in place that protect our children in other areas. We don't allow our students to get on our computers and to look at pornographic sites. But we have these books because of our policy, not because of our librarians. This is not how our librarians, they're professional people, but this is how our policy.
You know, if you read "Grown Men," or you have act two, scene two, and that's something you read, you think it's a great love story. That's, it's actually a tragedy. You've got two kids that are killing themselves. But just that one scene makes it appear that it's a love story. And that's all we do, is look at this one scene of a book, and we think, "Oh, we know everything about the book because of the one scene." It's actually by a nation called Miller Test, which determines the vicinity. We have to look at the entirety of the book, the purpose of the book, the intent of the book, the literary merit of the book. Many of the books that are reading brought up have one author. The author is one of ours. This is about representation. And this is about trying to remove representation. No, we shouldn't remove representation. Schools actually don't. What we need to do is touch on the learning. We should be attacking all the learning. He says that bringing in books is not appropriate. Here's the thing about the appropriate term, by the way. It's a scientific scale. Last year, my daughter's education was censored in this district because some people thought that illustrated pictures of sea horses were inappropriate. We're talking about a nonfiction book, a scientifically correct book, nonfiction. Illustrated pictures of sea horses were somehow inappropriate for a first-class class. Now, that's about a curriculum. So there's a little bit more leeway there for it than for the library. But still, that's what inappropriate was. Sea horses. Now, we use that term "appropriate." That certainly is like a skill to remove it. Today, this is inappropriate. Tomorrow, that's appropriate. Pretty soon... Pretty soon, there's going to be books about this and probably, they're going to change with it, so it's impossible.
I don't know about trusting our board, but I certainly watch it. And when I learned that the board was saying that there was porn in schools, I sent my daughter to the library and said, "Faye, find me some porn." She couldn't. She goes to Central, she couldn't find me any porn. So then, I went to my other daughter's school and I said, "Hey, Esther's librarian, where's the porn?" She couldn't find me any porn. I trust my kids, I trust the librarians, I trust my teachers, and I trust my school. But more importantly, I trust you as a parent to parent your own child. I will parent mine, you parent yours. Don't tell me what you think is appropriate for my daughter to read. I would make that choice. If I have a question about a book, I will go to the librarian and say, "Hey, I don't want my daughter to read this book." But for you to say that it's offensive, or explicit, or porn, wouldn't have known full well that it is not. We're going to have a problem. And if you vote for me and for the school board, I will fight for you like I would fight for my child. I will fight for every parent's right to parent their child because no one has a right to say what book my kid could read. But I would support your right to vote for what child, what book your child's reading. Just like if you don't want your child to read To Kill a Mockingbird because you're concerned about rape themes, which was discussed in one of the working sessions of our board. I feel sorry for your kid, but I support your right to say that.
I've given a lot of thought to this over the past few days because this is my third forum. And I've heard, I've heard repeatedly the same, maybe we don't have pornography in our libraries. If that's true, hallelujah. I'm, I'm, I'm good with it. But that statement assumes that if we do have pornography, there's something wrong with that. And I agree with that. And the reason I agree with that is for the past 18 years, I've been involved in counseling with adults and youth. I have had a pleasing responsibilities for thousands of people. And I have seen pornography destroy lives in very tragic ways. It is a cancer in our society. So if we don't have it in our libraries, hallelujah. But if we do, then I have a big issue with it. And there are a lot of moms who disagree about whether we do or don't. And I had some of them send me pages today from some of the books in our libraries. And it's, that it was vulgar, it was explicit, and I think it involves a sexualization of our children, which can be a detriment for years to come. I think libraries should have freedom to select books for their libraries within guidelines, with inappropriate guidelines established by the board. Again, if we don't have any in the libraries, hallelujah.
The amount of work teachers play seems is constantly piling up, and this is affecting teachers' retention. How do you advocate to keep teachers' workload manageable? What should the district do to recruit and retain all staff members?
So I think, thank you for the question. I think this comes down to, again, policies that the board puts together, making sure that there is extra work given to teachers. Because as a teacher on this forum has already spoken, there is never enough time. And so I think if we can keep, if we can work on policies and interact that with the teachers and get their feedback to know if those policies are working for them within the criteria of state, I think that would help manage their, their times to be specifically put toward education of students rather than worrying about some of the administrative duties. I'm aware that this might be fantasy for me in that I have to, I have, it would have to be a group effort with the board and also with the teachers, but it's something that I think would help with managing those workloads. As for recruiting and retaining staff members, teachers are professionals, they should be paid like professionals. They shouldn't, they, we've found that the legislature likes to cut education first rather than any of the other programs. And I think we need to really use our foot down and say, no, we need to make sure that the teachers are paid correctly, paid worthy of their skill level and their continuing education, so that we retain great teachers to continue great education for our students.
I mentioned a C four, but I think that we need to ensure that we're providing our teachers lots of opportunities for professional development. We need to look at how much they're carrying on the plates, the amount of testing that we require. Of course, we need to be competitive with salaries. And I think working environment is important, flexibility is important. A lot of times, people want, you know, that flexibility in their day where they go to the kids' ends for, you know, in the summertime, if they're working as administrators, having a four-day weekend, we look at some of those things in an effort to create incentives. We've built incentives in, if you stay with the district for a period of time, you get a bonus. So we are looking at lots of options to try to encourage our teachers and to help them in managing the workloads and also have just as action in jobs.
One of the scholars that I did in the streets talked to us a few years ago. One of the things he asked district duty in this training was to list all of the things that they were requiring teachers to do, all different programs, what we're going to teach, the curriculum, different testing, everything. And as he pointed out, that list then to the districts, the administrators themselves were a little shocked with how long that was supposed. Too often, what we do as districts, what we do as universities is just keep adding, keep adding, and keep adding, we never take away. And by not ever taking away, our teachers just keep getting piled on, how, where this question is coming from? This question is coming from that weight, that crushing weight of everything we keep asking teachers to do. New program this year, now new program next year, new program here after that. There's a lot of places where that consistency doesn't maintain, you don't keep it. So one thing to do with board is to slow down just a little bit, and we need to put all those things we're asking on the table, we need to see what they all are, and we need to actually pay attention to what is required to do. And then we need to think about whether or not we should change or just pull things off for a while. And we should definitely think about that before we add anything new. Teachers are, they are incredibly hardworking people, they love what they do, but they can only do so much before they break. And I've seen it happen, I felt it happen in my own career. We need to be there for them to protect them before they decide.
Of course, they're strict, they're overworked. They're being accused of trying to change children's values somehow against their parents. They're being accused of porn in the libraries. They're being accused of all sorts of things. These people go to school because they're dedicated to teaching. By the time we have this tragedy, they almost spent almost 30 years working with teachers. And you know, teachers in our community, and they love our children, and they love their jobs. But would you want to keep doing your job when people are constantly attacking you and making accusations against you? I wouldn't. What we need for our teachers is to support them. Of course, funding is nice, but they need to see our community supports them. They need to see our focus on our children, not on politics, not on policies that are brought forward by special interest groups, not on book banning, but on our children. And when we support our teachers, and we support our children, and we have a real partnership, that's when they can have real job satisfaction. That's when they love doing what they went to school to do. They love children, and they're being told that they're hurting them. Of course, they're overworked, of course, they need our support. So we need to take a hard look at how we're treating our teachers. We need to find out ways that we can support them and tell them that teachers teach, parents parent, and we've got you.
Well, the statement is, "The amount of work on teachers' plates is constantly piling up, this is affecting teacher retention." I agree completely with that statement. I, I think the biggest problem with work on a teacher, on a teacher's platform or plate is all of the stuff they're being asked to do by administration. A lot of that's being dictated by politicians, legislative level, the number of assessments they have to make, the number of meetings they have to attend, all of this other stuff that doesn't relate directly to what takes place in the classroom. So I, I agree that we need to do something to eliminate some of that. And this is an issue when I was on the board last time. Too much, too much busy work on teachers' platforms and not enough focus on what they do in the classroom. As far as recruiting and retaining staff members, none of us school board, teacher paying benefits in this district were among the highest in the region, if not the highest. And routinely, when we have openings, we would have literally hundreds of applicants for jobs. This is a place where teachers want to come. I don't know what's happened in the last eight years, but it's fallen way off. A lot of that, we can, we can talk to the legislature about, but administrator's salaries seem to keep going up. The central administration budget continues to build, so I think some priorities need to be examined.
Thank you. I think we've talked a lot about the fact that there definitely is too much on teachers' plates and all the things that we've talked about to try and fix that. I think truly the main, main thing that we need for retaining teachers, not only is a salary, I agree that salaries need to go back up to where they're at least competitive with local areas so that we can recruit more teachers. But retaining teachers, I think, is more important to do things like respect them, listen to them, listen to what they're seeing, that they're seeing in the classroom, listen to what they're saying, that they're seeing from parents, listen to what they need. And somehow, we need to develop a trust, a trust between teachers and parents, teachers and students, teachers and administrators, teachers and the superintendent. And they need to also trust that the board will listen to them and hear them as well. The money part, unfortunately, we don't have any control over that, that comes through the legislation, legislature. And the legislature has not been giving the amount of money that's been recommended every year. It's been stagnant for about the past eight years, that's what's been happening for the past eight years, is we have not had any improvement, increase for inflation or for any of the other increases in the number of students, and the building hasn't been going on. So it's multi-factorial.
Politics. Politics and the politics after this election, the kids in the classroom deserve quality education regardless of the beliefs of district leaders. How are we going to ensure that your political beliefs don't have a negative influence of the kids in our community?
Sorry, I can't quite see the end there. That is kind of a concern of mine. I think that we do need to stay neutral in the way we teach, in the way we present information. We live in a society now where folks are at odds about almost everything with each other. And public education will really be heard if we are seeing and stating perspectives, old views, or even partisan views in anything that we teach, anything we do from the district, board trustees on down. So we have affiliations with associations, so we need to be careful if they're partisan, that we don't have those affiliations. We have teachers in our classrooms, teaching the curriculum, we need to make ensuring that they're teaching the curriculum. I think, I think that's no injunction on them, I think our teachers are wonderful and they do do that. My point is that I think from top to bottom, we need to be consistent in not intervening into the fray of division and controversy. And we do that through transparency. We do that through how we curate pick curriculum, that all stakeholders have a say in it. We do that through making sure, like I said before, we don't have affiliations where those affiliates are being overly partisan. And just making sure that we keep those controversial issues, we present them, that we're presenting them at a reasonable size, so that our students can learn on a daily.
So, in order to, sorry, I lost the question. In order to make sure we don't have a negative influence on the kids in our community, we should be publicly disavowing those parties. Instead, what we've seen happen is certain political parties in town are endorsing candidates. They're doing so by telling them, they've got to announce that they endorse them. What that tells me is that those candidates are going to follow party line. It tells me that the education of my kids is less important to them than the party line that they can get in, the script that they can get in. It tells me that if my beliefs don't line up with theirs, then my beliefs aren't going to count, they're going to be less equal. That's the end of Animal Farm by George Orwell. On the, the cadavers of Alf on the wall, they can change in five, seven, two, and those two now say at the end of the book, all of those people, some are more equal than others. Those people who claim the political party in this race are saying very clearly to the entire community that some beliefs are more equal than others. And we can't let that happen. So we need to disavow the political groups, we need to disavow those political parties that are partisan, we need to make the decision to ourselves, that's how we do it. We stand up and we say, "I'm going to make a decision, but look at the evidence, but look at the research, but look at what's in front of me." And yes, I will be transparent about that, but I will not follow political script that is handed to me by a political party or national organization, because some people, I don't know, because all people are equal, some people are not, and we're equal to others.
How are we going to ensure that your political beliefs don't have a negative influence on kids in our community? Well, that's easy. I'm not listed as one of the people who are a member of the party that I am actually a member of. So that tells you where I am on that. I have no problem standing up for my beliefs regardless of the party lines. I'm not supported by a party, I'm not supported by a hack. I'm here to tell, I'm here to support the kids, I'm here for you. I'm here for, to ensure that parents' voices are heard and that parents get to parent their kids and teachers get to teach. Who cares for party things? I don't. That's not what our job is. I'm an attorney, I'm an advocate. I stand up every day for other people's rights, and I'll stand up for your rights. No party is going to tell me what to do, and no party is going to support me, I'm out here on my own supporting you. And so if you vote for me, I will continue fighting for you because I believe in your right to parent your kid regardless of your political beliefs or anyone else's.
Sometimes I think the use of the word politics depends on whose ox is getting gored. Politics is sometimes in the eye of the beholder. The other guy's polit, the other guy's being political if he stands for this certain issue, but I'm not being political if I am on the other side of that. So I'm, I'm not sure politics is the right way to look at this. It may be ideology more than politics. But I think the best way to avoid politics or ideology or any of that having a negative impact, impact on students in the classroom is to make sure what's taught in the classroom is not political, is not ideological, but rather science, math, history, English, the fine arts, computers, those subjects where teachers can have academic freedom within a defined curriculum that's been approved by the board of trustees of this district. If we can focus on giving quality education in the classroom and leaving all of this stuff out, no matter whether you call it politics or ideology or whose ox is getting gored.
This is a non-political office, and as a trustee, we are mandated to not have a political ideology one way or the other. We are mandated to make every decision we do about the student, about education, about what we can do to make that better. And that needs to be across the board. Everyone that's a trustee needs to have that same mindset and not bring their own personal political ideologies into this office. As far as affiliations go, when, when someone talks about not having affiliate, not having affiliations, and then they're on the slate for a political party, I think that's difficult to trust that. I think it's difficult to trust that those affiliations aren't really there. So all affiliations need to be looked at. And in a political race, because even though this is a nonpartisan race, it is still a political race, we're still running for office. If you follow the money, you can see what that politics is. And for those of us who are trying to be nonpartisan, the money comes from all, all different political parties and not just one. So this is a non-political party. Our main goal is to treat every student equally, to make sure that that's our main purpose.
How will I ensure that my political beliefs don't have a negative influence on kids in our community? I think political beliefs already do, so I don't need to add to them. This is a nonpartisan race. I am running as a school board trustee candidate. That's it. I, I don't subscribe to any specific party. What's key to understand is to recognize that the most important thing for that I'm running on is kids, education, people of our community, listening to people of our community, listening to stakeholders that come to me when you vote for me, and listening to facts. My job, when I get on the school board, is to listen to all of you, even those who didn't vote for me. Matter of fact, it's most important to listen to those that didn't vote for me because I have to convince them that I have still the right candidate. So my job will be to listen to all of you. That's really important. My politics, I vote for who I vote for. You vote for who you vote for, and I'm still listening to you because it's really important to the kids and their education. That's my job to be on the school board, is to make sure that quality education is what you all get.
Lately, our district has had issues with groups that have harsh rhetoric or personally attacking our teachers, like revenge parents and other staff. What would you do to support teachers and staff to protect from harassment?
Harsh rhetoric can personally attack in our teachers. I think we need to put out, we've heard that this morning. It's already happened. So one of the things we need to do is board the staff. So what we heard tonight, we heard tonight that they're pornography in our schools. That's attacking our brains, saying that they're not professional enough to do their jobs, saying that they can't follow the policies set up, saying that they aren't using professional resources. Of course, it's untrue, but that attack is still made, that attack is still launched. We've heard the indoctrination in the classroom. It's a ox getting gored. So with that indoctrination in classroom, what we're hearing is that teachers aren't professional enough to teach the curriculum. Instead, they're indoctrinating our kids somehow, so that all that spare time that they have, they've got a way to indoctrinate our kids. So we've already heard tonight the attacks on our teachers. It starts with the board. It starts with us standing up and saying that we will not have that rhetoric, that we will protect our teachers. We've heard in the board meetings the last several years, all the attacks along with them. And we've seen the connection between board and those groups that have attacked the teachers. They have shown up on their Facebook page, they've shown up on their chest, and they're supported by them in this election. So we know where the hate is coming from. We know that we're being supported by the hate of our teachers. It's time for the board to stand up and fight back against it. And we stand up to fight back against it by refusing to engage in it, by refusing to allow it, by not taking the script from those groups. Our teachers deserve our attention and it starts with the words that we use and actions that we have in the boardroom. I guess I've done.
We fix this by focusing on our children. Our children are entitled to best education. Our school board is required to set the situation so they can do that. We need to focus on our children and take the focus off of the national rhetoric that's been brought to our door by the policies, by political groups, by special interest groups, and by parties. Focus on the kids. We focus on the kids, we'll get back to the things that matter. We'll get back to the fact that we're at the bottom of 50th percentile in nearly every category in the state of Wyoming, our district is. We'll get back to the fact that our children need our support in identifying their needs and making sure that they have an environment where they're safe and where they can learn. We'll get back to the fact that we have to ready our children to go out into the workforce in whatever that looks like for them and work as a community in setting them up to succeed. That's how we fight this rhetoric. Focus on our children. It is about our children, not about politics.
I think, first of all, I would want, I would want to hear from teachers, parents, others, about what is they're experiencing. As I say, I've got three teachers in the district, my children. And, you know, they've never expressed to me that they feel picked on or attacked by anybody. I'm not saying it doesn't happen, but I've never, I've never had that expressed to me by them. I have many dear friends in this district, administrators and teachers, so I've never heard from them. Again, not to say that it doesn't happen. And if it is happening, it shouldn't happen. And this is the work we need to do and we can to stop it by dealing with conflict when it occurs. I, I will listen to those concerns, but I think parents also need to be listened to. And so I think sometimes I'm not sure if we're calling this, they're being attacked or parents just expressing their opinions. That when they express their opinions, especially in the board meeting, it needs to be done respectfully and appropriately within certain time concerns. But, so I'm not really sure about that. The last comment I'll make, and my comment earlier about the ox getting gored had nothing to do with teachers. It had to do with things that have been said tonight on this stage and have been said in the last two nights. Politics depends on your perspective. And I think the vast majority of our teachers are outstanding.
I think anyone who has been to a board meeting in the past two years will understand exactly why this question was raised and what kind of rhetoric our teachers are being exposed to. And I had doctors who were trying to advocate for their patients and their patients' families who were chased up to their cars and would not go back to a board meeting because they were afraid. I mean, this is what our teachers are being exposed to. This is the political rhetoric that we're trying to avoid. This is why we need to get back to the board not paying attention to national political issues and getting back to what's important. What's important is our students' education. What's important is respecting our teachers, supporting our teachers, making sure that they know that the district has their back, that the district agrees with, you know, understands their, their expertise in this field and that we will support them in how they're teaching, in how they're dealing with their students in any way that we can. And not trying to change what they teach based on political issues, not trying to tell them how to teach history, not telling them how to get rid of certain passages and goals.
I'm pro-teacher. I believe in them because I can't do their jobs. They're professionals, so they deserve all my support. When I'm on the board, that will be my goal, to support them. And also, the board meetings happen frighteningly because of the rhetoric that is about it. And it's, it's difficult because you don't want to shut anyone down and say, I'm sorry, your views are way out there. You don't want to do that. You need to listen to everyone. But I think there are times when the board can say, take a step back, take a deep breath, and remember that the teachers are not the enemy. The students are most important. We are all here to make sure that the students are gaining the greatest education they can get. And that is because of the teachers we hire. We need to trust the teachers. And as a board member, we need to back them up when they are threatened by rhetoric. I have not been on the board yet, so when I get on the board, it will be my job with the team of people here to make sure that the teachers are supported when things like this happen.
Teachers should never feel unsafe. They should never feel underappreciated. And I think in some cases, they do at times. My son was just telling me a few weeks ago about a TikTok challenge that a student did to another teacher, to a teacher trying to hit them. And I couldn't believe it. I couldn't believe it this respect. And that's something that we need to talk about as a community. I agree that it's been pretty hairy at board meetings. People come and love this from both sides of both, all arguments. But it is our job. I'm also free to listen. And one thing that I always try to do is to listen and learn as much as I can about every issue that comes before a board. And I do have a history of engaging on issues in a respectful manner, even if I disagree with my colleagues on the board because at the end of the day, there are human beings. And we all deserve to be grownups and to be talking to each other in respectful manners.
We're gonna make it? So we are gonna have to skip question nine. We are running out of time. But the final question is, what final thoughts or information would you like to share with voters?
My name is Melissa Theriault. That looks like Theriault on your ballot. I'm running for the Central Triad. You know, it's a shame we didn't get answer number question nine, but I'll tell you, I was contacted today by two teachers not in our school district because I'm so well-known in the world of advocacy that they referred to me to talk to them about how to support a student who, without, because they're afraid of retaliation. That's what I did. Vote for me and I'll be here to support you. And when people tell you that they don't believe them, we heard today about the one-page resolution that the school board passed to combat harassment. However, what was said, but what you can find yourself, is that it took the board three hours to pass that one-page resolution because they're busy work smithing and removing protective classes from that group. Vote for me. I don't need three hours to say that harassment is not okay. Vote for me. I'm letting care of your kids. Parents parent, teachers teach, and the school board creates the environment to do that. And someone asked for your vote on November 8th, Melissa Theriault. I'm fighting for you and I'm sure you are heard.
Thank you again for having us this evening. I will just say that, I want to circle back to the racism and abolition. I do not believe that our country is systemically racist. I do not believe our state is systemically racist. I do not believe this school district is systemically racist, our community is. I've been doing my whole life. I don't see that in where I live. Are there races? Is there racism? Absolutely, and there always will be. Do we need to fight against them? Absolutely. It's wrong. But the vast majority of the students in this district and the vast majority of the teachers in this district, the administrators in this district are wonderful, good people, who are just doing the best they can to achieve their dreams. And if, if I'm elected to the board, I will do everything I can to help ensure that. I have ten interns on the board and my record speaks for some. Thank you.
Thank you. Trust, I think that's one of the things that we need to build on the school board. I think that's one of the things that we've all heard from teachers and some administrators as well as students and parents, that there is no trust. There is no trust that they're heard, there is no trust that anything is ever done. There has been some dysfunction in our district in the past many years. We've had multiple superintendents and, and that's not the average for well-functioning districts. And so we need to make sure that our board is functioning together, that we are making every single decision that we're making for students, for teachers, for student achievement. And we need to make sure that everyone in the district can trust what the board says and what the board does. And that is the key.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Beguah Holme. I'm running for the school board, the LCSC one. I wanted to reiterate something about, about the reading question is, it's not our job to police what people read. We have a great opt-out program which gives the parental rights and hands to parents. You find something objectionable in our libraries, you can definitely opt out. And that means you get to make the choice, you get to make the opt-out for your rights, and you get the responsibility. It's the responsibility of the board to make sure your kids have access to books and access to education, but it's not our job to police. That's the parent's job, to make sure their kids are reading what they want. I also say I believe in accessibility, I believe in equality, I believe that everyone deserves a quality education, and I believe in building trust of board with the community. My name is Beguah Holme. I'm running for the LCSC one, board trustees.
Well, I have an awesome thank you for having us here tonight to talk about all these issues. As you might imagine, there's always more to the story. I don't have time to explain some of the things, the misunderstandings that have been stated here tonight about hate speech or the one-page resolution. We got five minutes before the meeting. Or the seep horses and how that had nothing to do with the board and committee, was made of our community members, or affiliations, and how that takes money away from our district and our students. And they're being partisan, I think it's, it's relevant to our district. But what I stand for is transparency. I've always stood for transparency. I'm a mom, that's why I'm a mom, that's why I look through all this trouble, is that I want more communication with our kids and our families, with our districts. I want us to be accountable to our stakeholders. I want us to improve our test scores, as I started out tonight saying. And, well, I'm ready to sign. Thank you.
I have one student in mind about to say this, but indoctrination means that we're teaching contrary to that. So indoctrination is to say, our country is not systemically racist when it's baked into the Constitution and it's one of the final clauses. It's going to say it's not systemically racist when it's written by a slave owner who did not kill the slaves in the wrong world, I'll tell you that. It's going to say that it's not systemically racist when it's baked into the Constitution itself and fought a civil war to preserve slavery and itself fortunately that lost. Indoctrination is going to say that none of those things happened because it's not systemically racist or really good. Actual teaching can teach the facts. Our job on the board is to create policies that allow the teachers to do what they're paid to do, do their job, their professional job, and act in a way that board should not be managing by forcing indoctrination, by criticizing teachers. Our job is not to be partisan, not to follow the rules, not to follow our own mind.
Please give a round of applause for our student honorers this night. And please give a round of applause for our candidates for being with us tonight. Thank you. Thank you again to everyone for joining us tonight and for the loads of people who love to sit on all three of these forums. We have those links to the recordings for each of the forums of the Shiny and Teacher Education Association's YouTube channel. So you'll be able to copy those links and please share them widely with everyone. I personally believe that there is no greater election than that of the school board because that's your local community. So please share those links so that people can be informed voters. Remember that every Laramie County, Laramie County registered voter can vote for two seats, one area, and one at large during the election in November. We thank you and applaud you for showing up, watching, and being informed voters. Have a wonderful night. Thank you.